I'd like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order. This meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under Virginia Code 2.23708.2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the propensity of this current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statulatory required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. A motion is in order for the approval of the closed session agenda. Ms. Zargarpur?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous.
Moving on, a motion to enter closed session. A motion is in order.
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, that Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with Division Council and staff the contracts, performance, evaluation, appointment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific officers, employees, and appointees under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A, 1 and 8, and to dispense with the attendance of the superintendent as necessary as provided under Virginia Code Section 22.1-69. And two, to receive information and discuss with Division Council and staff actual or probable litigation and specific legal matters involving specific staff and students under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A, 1, 2, 7, and 8.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wall?
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. And, um, I'm sorry.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Okay, at this time, the Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and will return in approximately one hour. Thank you. We're moving on to closed session certification. A motion is in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of May 19, 2021 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies; and two, only such public business matters were, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do you have a second?
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jason, can I see, um, okay, all right. Thank you.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to the closed session. Action items and motion to order. Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie seconds a motion. Okay, any discussion? Okay, at this point, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
Motion passed.
At this point, I'd like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. The purpose of the meeting is being, the meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under Virginia Code 2.237808.2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020, through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the propensity of the current state emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. At this point, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is over here. Ms. Williams, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to move to the approval of the public meeting agenda. Motion is in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Zargarpur, or, I'm sorry. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Next, we'll move on to the adoption of the consent agenda. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I'd like discussion.
Can you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry. I'd like a discussion on 1108 and 1109. Just that, I wanted just to verify the actual elements of those two items.
And go ahead. What is your question?
I'm sorry, I, who's, who's, can, can someone tell me about the COVID one-time supplemental grant for preschools, Mrs. Goss, and the Head Start, because I'm on that policy council.
Dr. Waltz.
Ms. Goss, do you have a brief answer?
Yes, I just need an explanation, that's all. I'm on their policy council and I just need to get something.
Good evening, Mrs.
I understand 1109, which is carryover.
Mrs. Jessie, which item again are you asking about?
Okay, could, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
It's 1108 and 1109.
1109.
So I'll lead off while Rita, Ms. Goss is looking for that. So, the cost of living, anytime we have a federal entitlement program and we make a cost adjustment, that cost adjustment is then also passed along through the grant to those employees. Ms. Goss, is there anything I left out of that?
No, that cost of living is, is the adjustment that's passed along. And so we have to do that through the grant because the grants are based on actual salaries and not average salaries.
Okay. What about 1107, this one-time supplemental grant for preschools? Could you give me more information on that?
So 1107 is actually, this is our, our grant application, and this is for the COVID, the one-time supplemental grant. So they offered additional money for preschool programs because of COVID, and so this is our application for that additional money so that we can utilize that going into next year.
How many additional programs are we adding this year? Do you know? I'll copy it.
We are adding, um, let's see.
I've heard the number seven, but I'm not.
We are adding seven new classes, but they're not all related to, they're not Head Start classes.
But it doesn't relate to this particular supplemental?
That's correct. This is around the Head Start grant specifically.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote on the adoption of the consent agenda? Ms. Ralston, yes. Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Okay, moving on to citizen comment time. Due to the COVID-19 state of emergency and illegal restrictions, the school board's authority to conduct this meeting through electronic means, unlike other public bodies, meeting electronically under more expansive legal authority, all discussions at this meeting by board members, staff, citizens must be limited to agenda items. Citizens may speak on an agenda item for two minutes when the board is able to resume regular meetings without the virtual participation permitted. During the state of emergency, expanded citizen comment will be resumed as provided by Policy 134. In the interim, citizen comment time has been reinstated on a limited basis to order, in order to allow public comments both in person and through electronic means during the state of emergency. Citizens are encouraged to submit their comments by email to the clerk, who will share them with the school board. Those citizens who signed up today in advance with a school board clerk who had signed up no later than 4:00 PM today, May 19th, may address the school board in person or virtually electronically about matters relating to May 19th, 2021 agenda items only. There are 10 people speaking in person and four speaking virtually. Citizens are reminded if they're not speaking on a specific agenda item for this evening's meeting, they will be asked to step down. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium and speaking virtually. If you do not do so, you'll be asked to step aside. Please state your name and address, address for the record. We will start with Paul Georgia, and then after him will be Jennifer Ashman, and then I have Carol without a last name, but Paul, Paul Georgia. Next, Jennifer Ashman. There'll be a timer up there, just.
Okay, just tell me when to begin.
Welcome. Go for it.
My name is Jennifer Ashman. I'm a Haymarket resident. My address is on file. And the first bullet point of your equity statement discusses resources and opportunities being provided to all staff and students. This sounds like equality, not equity, and that is a very good thing. This should be an equality statement because what you have written is classic verbiage of equity of outcome and is not good for Prince William County students, right? Equality means everybody gets the same opportunities, and what they do with those opportunities is up to them. Equity is crossing the finish line at the same time by slowing down the fastest kid. There is no excellence with the latter, and I'd love to get into who gets to decide what's culturally relevant, but I don't have time for that here tonight. This statement is basically garbage. You're destroying the school system, our superintendent who's spent over 15 years improving it, and now you're destroying it. You are attempting to reprogram the American psyche and its cultural terrorism. How are you going to eliminate learning disparities without removing advanced classes for the children who achieve it? There will always be learning disparities because children are different, learn differently at different speeds, and have different work ethics. Now, about eliminating institutional beliefs that perpetuate systemic racism and discrimination. Show me one systemically racist policy. One, because in order for it to be systemic, it has to be written in your policies already. Show us one. And if there are any, why wasn't it addressed well before now? I'll tell you why, because there aren't any. Stop pandering to the emotionally charged rhetoric, because that's all this is. It is not your job to push what you believe is systemically racist. Instead, teach our children math, science, history, social studies. If your students know what your political beliefs are, you have already failed. You are supposed to teach them how to think, not what to think, which brings me to bullet point number seven.
Thank you, Ms. Ashman. Appreciate it. I have, I have a Carol. I don't have a last name here. Carol Fox.
Hey, 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 you took a second off. I'm just walking up here. Put it back at 59, please. My name is Carol Fox. I live in Gainesville, 69, 6905 Sunday Science Court, Gainesville, Virginia. Okay, I was noted, I was very interested in reading your statement that you published about the commitment to the education of Prince William County students, and several words stuck out to me in that particular statement, and the main one that stuck out to me was the word equity. Those, the word equity means to achieve the same thing. Equity in the student means that if you have a student who is learning rapidly, you hold that student back, and if you have a student who's learning slowly, you slow the whole class down till that student catches up, so that both can achieve the same outcome. Well, now if you have the same outcome, we have to get rid of signet programs, we have to get rid of advanced math programs, we have to get rid of advanced English programs, we have to get rid of advanced diplomas, we have to get rid of IB programs, we have to get rid of Cambridge programs, because you don't have the same outcome when students are in those different kinds of classes. Students always will achieve faster, just like the lady before said, because of different ethics as far as studying and work that they put out. The other thing that I have a problem with is your seventh bullet point where it says staff will reflect the rich diversity of our community. Does that mean that you're going to take a look at the classroom that I last taught in, and you're going to hire only people that look like the kids that were in that classroom? If it does, that means that you have a problem with racism because you're choosing which races of teachers you're going to hire and not hire. I think you should hire teachers. I think you should hire teachers that are of the highest quality, that will create the best outcome for all students, just like your statement says, a world-class education. You cannot have a world-class education with having, without having rigorous standards, having students meet those rigorous standards, and some going beyond those rigorous standards, and some just basically barely even meeting them. So therefore, in order to continue your world-class education, you're going to have to stop using the word equity in this, this statement and put in the word equality. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Ms. Melanie, Ms. Melanie DeChato, and then after her will be Kristen Gladhill.
I'm Melanie, Ann Arden Avenue, Woodbridge, Virginia. Equality is providing the same resources to the group, understanding that outcomes may be different, while equity is to allocate the specific resources needed to reach an equal outcome. Your choice of words is not lost on us. We see what you are doing. Is the goal for students to demonstrate equal outcomes? What does that even mean? What does that look like? Does everyone get the same grade? Are we just going to do away with grades altogether? How does this prepare them for life? Bullet two states giving students what they need, not necessarily equally, to meet their learning health and safety requirements. So we'll no longer be providing students equal resources to meet these requirements? Who decides what each student needs individually? Who decides what my child needs? If I think she's behind, will she get resources to help her? If she's not being challenged enough, will advanced courses be available to her? That is equality. Or will someone else make these determinations based on where her classmates are in order to keep everyone the same, because that is equity? Bullet three, eliminating learning disparities? There will always be disparities among students, and to eliminate them doesn't mean to raise the students up who are behind, but rather to bring down more advanced students to level the playing field. This is a socialist approach to education. Rather than some students excelling, no students excel. Bullet seven mentions hiring staff who reflect the rich diversity of our community. So does this mean staff will be hired based on their skin color? Have you considered the legal implications of such hiring practices? Qualifications will no longer matter, only skin color. Bullet six and eight, referencing teaching culturally relevant curricula. Who decides what is culturally relevant? Because it seems to me that politics and the loudest voices on social media are the deciding factors here. This has nothing to do with preparing our children for society, but has everything to do with laying the framework for critical race theory, which has no place in our community. This school board needs to reverse course now, and never forget that you serve us, the community. This is not an entitlement. This is a privilege. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kristen, Kristen Gladhill. Kristen Gladhill. Amanda Ballard.
Okay, I am Amanda Ballard, and I live in Haymarket. And I agree with the proposal stating that Prince William County is committed to inclusive practices to promote excellence for all. I'd like to clarify a couple of the points before it is voted on. Primarily, I'm concerned that it is a nice way of saying, or a nice segue in to having critical race theory taught to our children. One of my concerns with this term is that we will use terms like white privilege and systemic racism. My concern with these terms is that I've worked hard to teach my young children that the privileges they have are built off hard work and, I'm, sorry, that are built off hard work and character. We teach our kids that they aren't going to make it in life, or that they will be held back because the color of their skin is detrimental. I don't want my kids to go through life with pre-made assumptions based off of what somebody in school taught them about what other people might think about them. I don't want them to go through life with an artificial weight dragging them down and that they feel, that they feel has been placed on their heads by default because of the color of their skin. Teaching other kids that they're better positioned in life because of that kid's skin or their kid's skin will perpetuate stereotypes that highlight our differences and minimize what we have in common. I fear it causes exactly what we are trying to prevent. I fear that it will make kids either view themselves as being disadvantaged or underprivileged because of the color of their skin. I also fear that other people will view them through the same filter. Instead of feeling included, they will feel different. I don't want people to look at me or my kids differently because of the color of our skin. I personally felt much more comfortable in my skin before we started emphasizing that I was right, that I was different. As a mixed-race African-American, I've had many more negative interactions with people from both sides of the color spectrum since last summer when we started emphasizing it. There are issues that need to be addressed, and I think that we need to be careful that the way that we address them does not create more divide than it does healing. As you vote, realize each one of those statements open up many other doors to what is being taught to our children. I'm asking that the statement be revised before approved to remove politically and societal divisive terms, specifically systemic racism, which has already proven to be a flashpoint to ensure the tone and complete inclusion. The statement reflect, the statement should reflect inclusive practices, equality, and promote excellence for all.
Martha Cutzinger? Martha Cutzinger?
Good evening, Martha Cutzinger, Gainesville District. Captain John Smith arrived in Jamestown in 1607. He already had experience with slaves. He had been one. In 1602, he was captured in Crimea as a mercenary soldier and was sold to a Turkish nobleman. In 1604, he escaped and made his way back to England. How many PWCS students have been taught that the founder of Jamestown, of Virginia, was a former slave? As you vote tonight on your equity statement, know that parents, teachers, taxpayers, and students are getting up to speed on this critical theory definition of equity, and that they know you are about to codify discrimination into PWCS policy. You do not use the term equality for a reason. Equity requires discrimination. It is entirely about equal outcomes, and that is Marxism. They also know critical theory neo-Marxism is foundational to the concept of equity, and that this statement lays the foundation for introducing critical race theory into the curriculum, and that the new name cultural responsive training is simply a name change. They're catching on to the goal of equity, dismantling the system, including the Constitution, through divide and conquer. Just like in Loudon and in Fairfax and at TJHS, they reject this dogma and understand that it destroys education. Some of you and many administrators have not studied the ideology here. You are taking cues from Richmond and One Virginia, and you're rubber stamping these divisive tenants and opening the gates to disaster. Ibram Kendi is a product of college indoctrinated critical race theory and the leading proponent of equity. His book, How to Be an Anti-Racist, was read by your advisory board on equity. In it, Kendi writes, quote, "The definition is whether the discrimination is creating equity or inequity. If the discrimination is creating equity, then it's anti-racist. If the discrimination is creating inequity, then it's racist." He also writes, quote, "Capitalism is essentially racism. Racism is essentially capitalist." And, quote, "The only remedy to racist discrimination is anti-racist discrimination. The only remedy to past discrimination is present discrimination. The only remedy to present discrimination is future discrimination." That is equity. That is critical theory, and that is neo-Marxism. Please change everything to equality. Thank you.
Jason Buchanan? Jason Buchanan? Jason Buchanan? Alan Blocker?
So, what's in the statement? Most of it we can't argue with, right? It sounds great. We want inclusion, we want equity, one of these things, but what's really in that statement are the foundations of what everybody's already said. It is critical theory, straight from 1930, that came here and has been trying to take over and subvert this country from that time. What's laid in there are all of the phrases and all of the words that say equality or equity, that say inclusion, that say we're looking out for people, but they drive wedges, and they're discriminatory, and it establishes a racist ideology. And so what you need to do is relook at that and take these fundamental tenets of what is a cultural Marxist and critical theory out of that and actually go after what you want, which is equality and trying to improve people's lives. Telling them that from the get-go, because of things about them that cannot change, they are victims, or because of things about them they cannot change, they are oppressors, is divisive at the beginning. It cannot end well. So I'm asking you to rethink this. Don't go down this road. Don't follow the counties nearby, right? Stop this now, and we need to reverse course.
Kevin Murphy?
I don't really have a prepared statement, but I'd like to know, it seems all of us in this room here are, really seem to be against this critical race theory. I want to tell you guys, it's already here. I called my daughter's seventh, my seventh grade daughter's principal earlier this year, and I asked her a question, the very first question I ever asked her. I never met her before. I couldn't meet with her in person due to COVID. My question was, when you were in seventh grade, how many books did you read about rape? Can you, any, raise a hand, if any of you? Nobody? Okay. There were three books on a reading list that were about rape, and one of them was White Boys Raping Black Girls. Why is this in seventh grade? One of the books was called This is My America. It was, had a black girl on the cover, as if my daughter's America, who happens to be white, like me, like, that, they're different. No, we are one America, and what this is all doing is divisive and destructive, and it's going to lead ultimately to war and death unless we stop it. Our kids are not your social experiment.
I want to focus on one specific bullet point in the, in the, in the statement, which says, assuring all PWCS staff members, examine and interpret beliefs, implicit and explicit biases, policies, and or practices that perpetuate systemic racism and discrimination. This statement raises a lot of red flags. Why do you believe this examination of beliefs and biases among the staff is necessary? Do you have evidence of widespread racism and biases among the staff? Do you have any evidence of such beliefs or, and biases? Have there been incidences of racism, systemic or otherwise, among the staff? If so, how many? Has any due diligence whatsoever been done before putting forth this vague, open-ended, and frankly nonsensical statement? I suspect it's just parroting the unfounded fashionable assumptions of leftist ideologues in academia. It all sounds alarmingly like an unwarranted assumption of guilt. My second question is, can any of you define systemic racism? What do you mean by systemic racism? The state of Virginia is thick with anti-discrimination laws at every level of government, and those laws reach into every public and private institution in the state, including the schools. Isn't that the opposite of systemic racism? I fail to understand how the system is racist. My third question is, how are you going to assure this examination of beliefs and biases take place among the staff? Can any of you explain the manner in which this examination will be assured? Will this entail bringing in and paying diversity trainers, steeped in critical race theory, to do indoctrination workshops with the staff? In one school system in Springfield, Missouri, teachers were forced to locate themselves on an oppression matrix, which defined white heterosexual males as the privileged social group, and women, minorities, transgender, and LBGt people as oppressed social groups.
Thank you, Mr. Georgia. Time's up.
They also conflated opposition to mundane government policies such as raising property taxes, which have no racial component whatsoever, to the true evils of Nazism and slavery.
Thank you, sir.
Please reject this statement.
We'll move to Mr. Stevens. We have four folks virtually. You want to take over?
Yes, sir, thank you. I will be sticking to the two-minute clock as well, so after we get to two minutes, I'll be disabling the microphone, so please try to make your statement within the two minutes. Our first speaker will be Jeff Fuller. You can unmute yourself, and you have the floor.
Am I on video, or are you just listening to me?
We can just hear your voice, sir.
Okay. I'm Jeff Fuller. I live in Haymarket, and I was startled to read your statement. I would like to just say that the people sitting in that room who've I would like to just say that the people sitting in that room who've already talked should be sitting on the school board. I have never heard such garbage, and one short statement is this. The, I have lots of problems with it. You don't have time to hear them. Whoever thinks this is a good idea, I wish you'd raise your hand, and so we can see who thinks this is a good idea, and where did it come from? Who sat down and wrote this? It's poorly constructed. It's ill-defined. I have problems with every bullet, but the thing that jumped out at me is a discussion about, that basically assumes that we are systemically racist. Several people have already raised this point, but we're not a systemically racist country. Even Joe Biden and Kamala Harris had to say that recently, but of course with lots of caveats. But this is a step into Mayoistic thinking. It comes right out of the critical race theory playbook. I'm grateful for the lady that read the specifics of that. That was very informative and not surprising. You cannot, you cannot, there's no science available that would tell you that you guys or somebody you hire is capable of figuring out what people's implicit biases are, let alone explicit biases. There's no research on that that's acceptable. And I think you should start off by finding one and explaining to your constituents and your parents what that science is. So please throw this thing away, start over, have a group of parents come together and help you come up with something that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melissa Ridge. You can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Melissa Ridge, and I live in Lakewood. I'm a parent and an educator with more than 30 years' experience as a public school teacher, a paraprofessional, and a homeschooler. I have taught special education. I've taught in Title I schools, and I've taught English in the upper bound program at the University of Mary Washington. I chose to homeschool my own children because of systemic racism and inequity I saw in Prince William County schools 20 years ago. My younger children chose to attend high school in the county a few years ago, and both decided to withdraw in their sophomore year due to systemic racism in the school and inequity in the curriculum. My children are now adults, and I'm working in the school system again. I want to thank the members of the board, as well as any staff in the school system, who has listened and responded to those in the community with concerns regarding equity. This is the first time I've seen those concerns met with anything other than a Band-Aid. There is traction and movement, and a new energy and commitment many of us thought would never happen. And as a result of that movement forward, there is going to be a pushback from those who don't understand equity and who think that they're going to lose something. I am asking you to please continue this push forward, understanding that change is hard and painful but necessary for growth. Equity benefits everyone, including those arguing against it. We don't live in a mono-ethnic country or county. We have a rich history and a diverse culture, and our current curriculum only gives a narrow view of the whole. Our current curriculum is only one example of the systemic racism that exists in Prince William County. Decentralizing whiteness, choosing, changing our default is hard but necessary in order to educate all students. Equity allows us to invest resources where they are most needed, not where they're redundant. It gives opportunities to those who didn't have them before, and it doesn't actually take any opportunities away from anyone. I've heard a lot of people speaking out of fear and is striving an inaccurate narrative. I'm asking you to instead listen to those whose voices have been historically silenced. In order to claim we provide a world-class education, we must take the actions needed to provide that for all children. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Magali Hurtado. You can unmute yourself.
Good evening, members of the board. Magali Hurtado, and my address is in the clerk coming in the Okupan district. Much has been said about what equity means, and as it is common with everything new, there may be fear and resistance for those who are not truly familiar about it. I just want to add, to bring a small example of how our system excludes parents because of a language barrier. Spanish is my first language. Being bilingual has allowed me the privilege of translating for monolingual members of our community. When a parent who wants to address this board meets a language interpreter, they get the same time, equal time, as everyone else. That means that automatically their time is cut in half because they must make sure there is time for their language interpreter. That is an example of systemic, if not racism, at least exclusion. Everybody gets the same time. That doesn't mean this is an equitable situation. If this board allowed for an increasing time for everyone else who needs a language interpreter, those of us addressing you in English would still have our two minutes, and I'm confident the meeting's length would not increase significantly. I know achieving equity in education is far more complex than that, but I hope this small example illustrates that equity benefits our entire community. I fully support the proposed statement. I hope it is adopted and followed by actions. An equity-focused school system will not remove a program from a school like Woodbridge to assign it to a new school and not replace it for many years. It has nothing to do with critical race theory or cultural terrorism. I think having so much opposition to an equity statement voiced by residents of one specific district, if I'm not mistaken, the most affluent in Prince William County, seems to highlight exactly why we need one. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker I have is Justin Kane. You can unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chairman Latif, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you today. I agree with most of what has been said this evening, and I don't think I can articulate it any more eloquently than some of the speakers who've addressed some of these concerns previously. But I do want to express, you know, my sadness for some of the comments that have been made with regards to, you know, individual cases of bullying, as well as the lack of opportunity that's being presented. I think we often conflate the differences between equity and opportunity. I agree with Mrs. Ashman. I think that we have, we really need to take a look at the curricula from an equality perspective, making sure that each student is afforded the same opportunities across the board. And I really think that's the answer to the question. And rather than focusing on, you know, equity or providing those additional proprietary tools to promote the system of equity, what we should be doing is focusing on developing the science, technologies, engineering, mathematics, and artistic skills of our students, and giving them that equality and those opportunities across the board. I do also want to address one more thing. Social development of my children, I have three in the school system, is not the responsibility of the school district, the state, or the government. Social norms and behaviors start with the cultural nuance of each family and home. This statement implies that the district will be responsible for aggregating the ideals and thoughts of other parents to influence my children's social development. I think you should leave that responsibility to the families, each of whom have their own cultures, traditions, beliefs, and perspectives on social norms. The major assumption that the school system has a responsibility to influence social development, you're essentially marginalizing or discriminating against portions of the population. The district should stick to the facts and ensure that our children have the academic knowledge and skills that will enable them to be successful in life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Next, we will move on to the student representative. Caroline Silveira is joining us this evening. Caroline will be graduating from Hilton High School on June 3rd. Tonight is her last meeting with us, and then she'll be heading to, remind us, Carolina, where are you going to next year?
The University of Virginia.
University of Virginia, outstanding. Okay, Ms. Silveira, take it away.
Okay, thank you so much. So this is a pretty bittersweet moment for me, because, like Dr. Latif mentioned, this is my last school board meeting, sitting on the dais, and I'm finishing up a couple weeks until graduation. I'm so grateful to have received this opportunity. I mean, truly, I have grown so much and met so many new, great people. Some of these new, great people I'd like to thank, such as the school board members, Dr. Walts, and the superintendent staff, Mrs. B. Simpson, and all of the central office staff that has supported me and supported the student representative position. It has honestly been really great to work with you guys, and thank you so much. I would also like to thank the other student representatives and the student senate for their commitment to furthering student voice. Being a student representative under normal circumstances is stressful and challenging at times, but being a student representative in a pandemic has made this whole situation a little bit different. I have had a lot of opportunities to advocate for student voice because eyes really are on the school board and their decisions more than ever. I was able to meet with Senator Mark Warner this summer to discuss the impacts of COVID on education. I was able to establish a countywide cultural clubs coalition with members of cultural clubs with over 40 members across the division. This has really brought increased unity and given students an opportunity to share resources with each other. I advocated for more in-person testing of AP examinations due to graduation conflicts and internet issues, and that resulted in change, which I was really proud of. I was able to provide my input and student perspective into final exams, graduation, and prom for this year. Students truly do have a power and voice, and this position helped me realize that. I'm excited to see this position grow, as the new representatives and student senate will be joining us soon. I have two younger sisters, so I'm sure they'll keep me filled in, and what's happening in the county. I encourage students to keep using their voice. This is our school system. This is our education. And if anybody wants to contact me, my post-graduation contact information will be available on our senate website, pwcsstudentsenate.com. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you, Ms. Silveira. We will miss you, and we are grateful for all the efforts you and your colleagues have given us, and the students here have been well-represented across the division throughout this extraordinarily difficult year. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to Dr. Stephen Walts, superintendent's time. Dr. Walts?
Thank you, Dr. Latif, chairman of the board and board members. Caroline, congratulations to you. Best wishes into your future. It was great meeting you this year, and I remember one of our first contacts was that meeting with Senator Warner, and you spoke right up. So I was really proud that you talked, and I think it was really helpful. So best wishes to you, and your service is appreciated. Also wanted to mention, tonight is board member Justin Wilk's birthday. It's actually tonight, and he is here. Can you wave so everybody knows who you are? I have actually shortened my comments slightly so that he might be able to get home a few minutes early, but I still have quite a bit to cover. All right, so even during a pandemic, our school division continues to earn accolades. The quick shift to virtual learning has created many new challenges for teachers across the county, but our educators continue to rise to the top. The National Association of Music Merchants Foundation has recognized Prince William County Public Schools as one of the best communities for music education in the nation. This is the second year in a row PWCS earned this recognition for demonstrating an exceptionally high commitment and access to music education. Congratulations to Dr. Ed Stevenson, supervisor of the arts, and all PWCS educators contributing to music education in our division. And speaking of the arts, I've enjoyed multiple dance concerts and the Philharmonic Orchestra last night at the Colgan Center for the Fine and Performing Arts recently. Also, we have profiled a number of groups in our recent division-wide ceremony recognizing principal and teacher of the year and our retirement ceremony. During Teacher Appreciation Week, which is even more important recognition during a pandemic, I had the opportunity to visit Kyle Wilson Elementary to participate in many fun games and activities honoring teachers during that week. I also got even a small treat from the ice cream truck. I also attended the 2021 Henderson Elementary School Cultural Night, which was held virtually due to the pandemic. It was a great experience, and to see Henderson's recognition and celebration of the diverse cultures within their community. Last Friday, I had the chance to visit Ripon Middle School to talk with our students and staff members about their work and dedication during the pandemic. The facility improvements made there have been significant and have made a huge difference from the moment you drive up to the building. The facade, or we call that a fenestration project, has completely changed the way that school looks, and this is the second one that we've done, Second Middle School, Woodbridge Middle School, has been completed as well, and it literally looks like a new school. I have completed my service on the NOVA Manassas Woodbridge Advisory Council for Northern Virginia Community College. I recently attended my last meeting held virtually due to the pandemic with the council, and I would like to recognize the enormous growth in the programs offered to our students by NOVA over the past 16 years. I would also like to give a shout-out to Dr. Sam Hill, campus provost for the Woodbridge Campus, for his support of Prince William County School students. It has very much been appreciated. Last week, I attended the Forest Park High School School, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America Second Annual Police Appreciation Dinner. The dinner recognizes the school's security team and local police officials, many of whom were there. I enjoyed seeing and talking to our students and local law enforcement, and had the chance to meet our new chief of police, Peter Newsome. During the pandemic, I am grateful that our students were able to participate together in an in-person event in support of our law enforcement, and all the attendees were young women, high school women over at Forest Park, and they used the opportunity to also try to recruit them into considering law enforcement as a potential career. I also enjoyed a trip down memory lane as the superintendent's advisory support council held a virtual and socially-distanced tribute. They shared many stories about my tenure as superintendent, and I truly appreciated all their kind remarks. Last weekend, I was invited to attend the production of The Little Mermaid Jr. at Cedar Point Elementary School, and that took me down memory lane, too, because as our daughter graduates from high school, when we first moved here, The Little Mermaid was kind of a recent movie, and I remember she and all of her friends loved that movie. So it was great to once again enjoy the talents of our students onstage in person. Congratulations to Director Amy LaFleur and the talented students on this amazing production. Effective May 28th and thereafter, the governor's most recent executive order removes all requirements and constraints related to school graduations, fine arts performances, recreational sports, and social gatherings such as proms, other rewards ceremonies, school picnics, and so forth. Specific information about these events will come directly from each school. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention recommend schools continue to use the COVID-19 prevention strategies outlined in the current version of the CDC's operational strategy for K-12 schools for at least the remainder of this school year. The CDC will update its guidance for schools in the coming weeks, which will help inform school planning for next year. The governor's office executive order frequently asked questions clarifies in Executive Order 79 that the requirement to wear masks on school property is specific to indoor settings. It states that school policy regarding masks remains unchanged. This is consistent with CDC guidelines, which state that schools should continue with all current mitigation strategies through the end of the year, despite updated guidance for fully vaccinated people. As has been the case while outside of school property and on school property, students, teachers, staff, and visitors who are fully vaccinated can remove their masks. If individuals are not fully vaccinated, they must wear a mask unless they can maintain at least six feet distance. While inside on school property, students, teachers, staff, and visitors must wear a mask regardless of vaccination status. As elementary students are not eligible for vaccines and cannot consistently maintain six feet of distance while on playgrounds, face coverings remain required for recess if they cannot maintain the six-foot distance. In closing, I would like to recognize that this year has been exceptionally challenging for our students, their families, and our employees. Since August, our employees have overcome an ever-changing environment for learning while implementing new tools for teaching in a matter of weeks in what would normally take months or even years. At the beginning of the pandemic, we eliminated the cost-of-living adjustment for employees due to economic uncertainty. This school board, and I, made a commitment to revisit this cut. As the economic As the economic picture has improved, and to make up for the loss of the cost-of-living adjustment for the current school year, and to thank all employees for the extra work this year, both in person, hybrid, and virtual, I will be bringing a plan for a one-time pandemic pay adjustment. I will bring the details to the next school board meeting with the intent for final approval at the subsequent meeting. Thank you, and stay safe and healthy.
Thank you, Dr. Walz. Very good. Lot of good news there. Next, we're going to move to Board Matters 1501, the approval of the May 11, 2021 Board Poll. Ms. Wall?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Wall?
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve and authorize the Board Chairman-at-Large to send a letter to the Honorable Ralph Northam requesting a waiver or modification of the current social distancing requirement applicable to outdoor graduation ceremonies for the reasons stated therein.
So, yeah, there's a little bit of grammar mistaken there, but let me have a second on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I second.
Ms. Zargarpur seconds the motion. Ms. Wall, can you explain this motion and what the board poll was?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So we, in working with the division, were attempting to make graduation a powerful in-person experience for our graduates. And as it became apparent, we have large graduating classes in many of our high schools. The school in my district, Battlefield High School, has the largest graduating class. And it became apparent that with the strict social distancing requirements of six feet distance outside, as opposed to three feet distance inside, that we were going to have a very limited number of attendees. And this became very difficult and unworkable for families, especially in an outdoor setting. And so the letter was drafted to go to the Honorable Ralph Northam requesting a waiver of the social distancing requirement, or at least a modification to the current indoor restriction, which was three feet. Of course, with the CDC's guidelines and the revamped executive order, this is relatively moot, but it does show that we here in Prince William Canyon on the school board, we were looking out for our graduates and looking to make available the in-person experience, the honoring of our graduates, this final walk across the stage, so to speak, of an otherwise very difficult year for the class of 2021.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wall. So this, just as she pointed out, we sent a letter requesting the Governor waive all social distancing requirements. That letter, along with the CDC's effort, I think, is what encouraged the Governor to change the order from June 15th to May 28th, which allows us to have no, I don't want to say it, no restrictions, or at least you'll get final notice this week on how many students will be coming to commencement. It'll certainly be more guests than we had previously. And so, and then the Board of County Supervisors also sent a similar letter to the Governor asking for this. Ms. Williams?
Should we not, point of order, be voting on the authenticity of the poll, not the action from the poll?
Yeah.
Because this motion and this vote is, what we're talking about is the result of the poll.
Right.
But we should be authorizing the validity of the poll, and we're getting away from that, which is not what we should be talking about.
Understood, but it's, you know, as far as it being on the agenda.
Right.
We're voting on what the actual poll was.
We're also giving the public sort of an inaccurate picture of the protocol of what we're supposed to be doing.
Sure.
So I just want to make sure that the public is aware that what we should be talking about is validating the poll that was taken, because when we cannot meet in public, sometimes we have to take polls, and when you're at a meeting, then we're at a formal board meeting, then we come together to approve the validity of the poll. Because this discussion is on the letter and its approval, and it's, you know, I mean, I know I'm in the minority because I voted no, but that's not why I'm bringing it up. The point of what I'm bringing up is what we should be talking about, and it's, I would like for us to vote correctly on it, if possible.
Right. So this, our explanation was to discuss what the letter was requesting so the public is aware of what we voted on when we did not meet in public. And so it's just to clarify that. So I will ask the board members to please vote as they voted in the board poll, which was done not in the public setting, and that is why we're doing that this evening. So please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote? Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
S.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one no. Williams, motion passed.
Moving on to the proposed equity statement, this item is on for action. A motion's in order. Ms. Zargarpur?
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the proposed equity statement from the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams seconds. Any discussion? At this point, we did have a discussion on this last week. I'll ask the board members to, we'll go around. Any comments that you might have to add, or any questions that you might have at this point would be appropriate. I do, I'm going to start out just by sort of trying to clarify a couple things from my standpoint, and I think it's important, and then I won't speak again on this, I will vote, but it is really important to know that this school board has worked extremely hard over the course of at least the three years I've been on this board and prior, and along with Dr. Walz, to do exactly the kinds of things that we all want for our children. So, you know, this school board has committed to making this school division much better. It has always been that way. It's about continuous improvement. You know, I heard things, not just tonight, we received emails and letters on this topic, and I understand how emotionally charged this topic is, and this board has not been immune to emotionally charged topics for the course of these last fifteen months. And I mean, it's been a tough year. But just to point out a few things that I think everyone should know, that Dr. Walz and the school board has worked on, things like the Governor's School. We created twenty more spots and expanded it this year. It is bigger, it's going to be better, it has an engineering program. The Thomas Jefferson School for Science and Technology. And if there's anyone in the county who does not know, and I'm not saying this to, certainly not brag, but I have a son that attends Thomas Jefferson. I have a son who'll be attending the Governor's School in the fall. I have children in the Signet Program. I am the biggest defender, desirous of expanding these programs for many more of our children. This year's Thomas Jefferson admissions will hopefully accept more Prince William County students. I believe we've been getting, I'll say it nicely, shortchanged on the admissions to that school, which happens to be the number-one high school in the United States of America. And this board has fought for getting more of our students in those positions. If more of our students get into those positions, we get more students into our IB programs, our Cambridge programs, our Governor's School programs, and all of our top programs. It expands opportunities for everyone. This board has been committed to doing that over and over again. And if you heard from Dr. Walz tonight, expanding our efforts with dual enrollment, the community college effort, this is a board that has been committed. Every single one person on this board has been committed. Some history on this equity statement, there's an equity committee that was put together to advise the superintendent and the school board on issues in the school's system. Much of the discussion in their committees has been around expanding these types of opportunities. This committee was a committee of community members, parents, administrators, teachers, who've come together with this statement. The board is here to approve that statement this evening and ask questions regarding it. And those are just my comments this evening on that. But if there, I want no doubt to be left in the mind of anybody watching this that there is nobody on this board who does not believe we need to make this school system committed to improving it for everybody, and committing to approve and have more opportunities for everyone, and making sure our students all get to the best that they can. I'll leave you with one last thing. Our science fair has been expanded year over year since I've been on this board. That's in the interest of mine. Dr. Walz knows that. Our science faculty has known that. We have more students winning the science fair at the state level and the international level than we ever have before. This is not a board that is not committed to doing that. And this is a board that I believe, and I do take some, you know, privilege in speaking on behalf of the board in this matter, and if anyone thinks I'm wrong on this, feel free to say I'm wrong, but we are strongly committed to making sure we are the most competitive, best school division on the planet. And I'll leave it at that. I will start, I think, was someone have their hand up? Anybody want to go first, or we're good with what we spoke about last week? Any thoughts, Ms. Jessie?
Good evening. Okay, am I close to the mic? Sorry about that. I wanted to just share a couple of thoughts, and it's not because of the audience here tonight, but because of my own experience. When I think of my personal experience, it had nothing to do with whether or not my parents, whether we were hard workers, it was because I needed someone to support me. And therefore, I dropped into Northwestern University from an all-black school, and I had to work my way through that, and I had to have support. And I had some friends, and those friends were Mort and Mort Zimmerman and his wife, who took me in and helped me. And I think when you look at equity, you look at kids like me at that time and in our schools that need support. And I think also, I will speak for Ms. Ralston, because Ms. Ralston asked a question, what does equity mean? And does everybody understand it? And listening to the audience tonight and listening to other people who have spoken, I would ask this committee to at least come up with a statement of what equity really means, because I think there's a misinterpretation of it. As a principal at Vaughn Elementary for twenty years, I had a low-income school, and I had this thing called catch the wave, and Dr. Walz knows that, that everybody in that school had to move at a fast pace. When white kids, black kids, kids who were low-income, kids who had no parents to help them, when they saw everybody moving, everybody moved. So when I look at equity, I look at it as something for, I look, when I look at equity, I look at accelerate, don't remediate. You move fast, you move quickly. And when you look at equity, you're looking at access to dual enrollment, access to advanced placement, access to specialty programs and career readiness. And so tonight, I brought, because I thought there would be some concerns about it, I brought this navigating the equity. If you can go to VDOE, and it's called navigating the equity, and you can see the data, because equity has to be data-driven. When we look at disparities, when we look at disproportionality, we need to close those gaps. And so for me, it's about closing the gaps. One of the things that I would ask the committee also, if it's possible, when I looked at resources, I don't, and I looked at a lot of other equity statements for tonight, I don't see facilities. And there has been a lack of equity in facilities. Woodbridge High School, for example, forty-five years. I worked hard to get a gym there, to get a field there, and there is some inequities that we need to look at. In terms of race, I don't know if you call it systematic racism. I'm not sure that's what the whole equity is about, but it's about bringing people together and access opportunity, access to the same opportunities. All kids have the same opportunities, some of them do, some of them do not. Is it systematic? No, it's not. But it's something that we really need to work on. And it's about academic rigor, underrepresentation, and I think that in educating the community, maybe we should do more to educate the community, because I think that when people look at just a statement, then they don't understand that we're not talking about lowering the standards. You never lower the standards. You move faster and you move higher. So that's what I want to say on that. And my question is, how do we operationalize this? And maybe somebody from that committee could address that. What's the next step in this process? And perhaps this is not tonight to discuss it, because we're here just to talk about the statement, but I understand why some parents are concerned, because it's like, all of a sudden, you saw a statement, and you didn't understand where it was coming from, or whether or not your kids were going to be real bad. Okay, I'm sorry, ma'am, but ma'am, ma'am, I can't.
We need order, because right now it is Ms. Jessie's turn to.
I'm not just talking to you guys in this audience, I'm talking to.
I understand, so it is. So we need a point of order. Ms. Jessie is talking, it is her, it is Board Matters.
Ma'am, I am talking. Please. Every kid I've ever had, and most of the principals that I know, have always wanted every child to move, but there are some things that we could do better to increase the number.
Define equity. What is it? What are we arguing about?
Please.
You said you didn't have a definition.
Yeah.
Can we have a point of order? This is Ms. Jessie's turn to talk. We have had public comment.
I'm asking.
What are we talking about?
Well, see, equity means, when you look through the lens, it means different things to different people, and I'm sorry that I'm addressing you because I'm not supposed to. But I will ask the committee to define equity and put that for you. I think you deserve that. Does that make sense? Thank you. And with that, I think I've ended, but there are some, I think we've got some gaps in our communication, and I think if the committee could, who are the people on the committee? Are they here?
They're not here tonight, Ms. Jessie.
Okay, I thought some people would be here. But I do think I would like to chat with them about the statement, more information for parents, so they understand that we're talking about acceleration, not just remediation, and not holding kids back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Wall, did you want to speak?
Thank you, Ms. Zargarpur. I have a question. I want to raise some of the concerns that we heard from citizens tonight regarding training and curriculum, and how that will relate to transparency and accountability. So my question, and I don't know who exactly wants to answer it, but is this. What ki, sorry. What kinds of changes in curriculum and teaching practices are we going to be making? This goes along with what Ms. Jessie was asking about, you know, parents will want to know, like, what are we going to do with this? What is our next step? So can you tell us what kinds of materials will be used in our training to examine beliefs and biases? What methods will be used? For instance, are we going to be using Critical Race Theory that has been mentioned tonight to accomplish that training? Are we going to be using the book White Fragility by D'Angelo, or How to Be Anti-Racist by Kendi? Should I just ask my questions, and then you can kind of answer them all in a lump?
Well.
Or should we stop right there?
Good evening first to Dr. Latif and Ms. Zargarpur, and members of the board, Dr. Walz. As was stated at the last meeting when this statement was introduced, this is the first step. The actualization of it, the operational piece of it, is not on the agenda tonight and will be looked at as you have a new superintendent coming into the school division. This is the starting point, and Dr. McDade was a part of the discussion on moving this forward prior to her arrival. So it's, the questions you're asking are not the questions that are prepared to be answered at this point.
Understood.
Just so you know, folks, we have a school board meeting, and we don't typically have audience participation outside of citizen comment time. I would ask the audience to please refrain from comments, hooting, hollering, and if there is any further, I'll ask our security to escort you out of the building. It's just the property quorum for the meeting. Thank you.
Can I ask a, okay. So my, I guess my follow-up question then would be, I understand maybe that we don't, we don't know the specific answers to that, but I'll be looking forward to knowing them when we do. Will the public have the opportunity to view training materials and/or the training itself? Just so they can see what teachers are being trained to teach, and so that, and I suppose at some point, when curriculum is revised or changed, will the public be able to know what changes are coming to the curriculum and have a chance to review that? So what I'm looking for is, you know, what kind of transparency are we going to have? What kind of accountability are we going to have? And if we have an outside contractor, do we have an outside contractor that will be doing this training for our teachers? And if so, who is that? And can we review their training materials? Can parents have access to that so that they can see what's being taught?
Mr. Eamon?
Hello again.
Yep.
I don't want to sound like a broken record, but that again is a discussion that really is the next step with the new superintendent, when the new superintendent arrives. But we have transparency in all our curriculum, we've always had that, we'll continue to have transparency. We do follow Virginia Department of Education guidelines, and we will continue to do the same. But that's, the next steps are to be defined going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Iman. One sec. I'm checking. I'm going to let her wrap up, and then we'll go to Ms. Williams.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So one of the other concerns that I have heard, and I'm sensitive to, is the concern about lower standards. In point four, I think it's bullet four, we talk about systemic racism and overt discrimination. And I do want to know, I've always thought really highly of Prince William County schools. I think we do a really great job, actually, at least from my perspective, as a longtime consumer of Prince William Education. So could we be more specific about what we're talking about? We're assuming that we have racist or systemic discrimination and racism in our schools and our institutions, not just in, you know, maybe teachers or students on student or teacher on student, or vice versa, but what are we, what are we looking at when we talk about instructional beliefs and systems that we are going to be undoing? Are we talking about, like, doing away with grades? Are we talking about testing? Are we talking about course offerings? Are we talking about security personnel, and not having a security personnel in the schools? Discipline, are we talking about discipline? I think that, you know, I have, I think parents are concerned when we talk about, what are we doing away with? What are we dismantling? We should probably be a lot more transparent about that. Can anybody speak to that?
Mr. Iman.
I'll continue with my comments from earlier, in that much of this discussion, while good, needs to take place once the statement is in place, and the discussions are taken with the new superintendent and the administrative direction that's coming.
Understood. Ms. Wall.
All right. So I also have heard concerns from the community about the effect on our professional working environment that might come about because of the training that we are going to be doing, and perhaps changes in our hiring practices. So my question is, first of all, what does it look like in practice to assure that staff members examine beliefs, explicit and implicit biases? Do we mandate self-evaluation? Are we going to sit employees down with their colleagues in a professional development setting and ask them to expose their beliefs and biases in a public setting? Are we going to allow them to be quiet, or else opt out of that kind of expression? What will happen to those who share less popular viewpoints? Will they be retaliated against? Will they be in jeopardy of losing their, their standing in their school? Would we create a hostile work environment? I'm concerned about this kind of practice. How are we going to, how are we going to do that and still protect our teachers from a hostile work environment?
Dr. Walts, Dr. Ms. Iman.
Yes. The questions are all operational in nature, be it regardless of instruction, professional development, human resources, they're all operational questions. And again, with all due respect, the board is presented with a statement to guide those discussions going forward, that the discussion on the operationalizing of these is not the topic that is presented this evening for the board for action.
Okay.
I have one more.
One more.
All right. So parents are concerned about where this is going, and maybe, I understand, I try to frame this as a policy question, but they worry that changes in our curriculum are going to lead to controversial ideas or politics entering our schools. And so the question is, if our students, I guess this is an operational question, I'm sorry, but if our students object to what they're being taught, or if they feel uncomfortable, or if they feel like their freedom of thought or conscience or speech is being threatened, what are we going to do about that? How are we going to ensure that our students don't feel threatened because of maybe the difficult conversations that some of this might bring up?
As you know, the, we do not put our students in situations like that as a matter of practice now, and that's not going to change going forward. What I would say, any more specific response that you need, again, is going to have to come as a follow-up.
Okay. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am unabashedly probably the most in favor of this equity statement. What it's doing is codifying things that are already in existence and adding to them. We now train our teachers with culturally responsive training, not new. We now try to do our best to provide all the resources necessary for students right now. The majority of this statement is now being written, becoming a policy for things that are already occurring in our school division. This is enhancing and putting it down on paper and making it real. This is not about critical race theory. This is not just about being black or being white. This is not about that. This is about all of those isms. These are about the students who are high-performing and don't get their needs met, because we don't offer those classes to help them, once they've advanced out of our system. This is about the students who are at the bottom of that same spectrum and aren't getting the resources that they need. There's no promise to them, other than what's legally binding at federal and state level. We can do better than that. We should be doing better than that, for every single student. Equality does not do that. Equity does do that. You don't have to agree. We don't have to believe in the same set of things. That's what makes everything great. What we do agree on is making sure that every single student has the opportunity to succeed. When you don't share the same set of beliefs, that impacts your student outcome. Absolutely impacts your student outcome. Can't guarantee that everyone is going to, there's no guarantee that everyone is going to have the same outcome. It's not how it works, anywhere. What you can do is give them the opportunity, so that they have the opportunity to do that. That doesn't happen. I am perfectly fine with people who don't believe in systemic racism, who don't believe in white privilege. That's fine, you don't have to. This is not a forced issue, not forcing you to change your personal beliefs. What we are is a public school system. It is our obligation. Students now, across the board, don't have the same opportunities. Period. And if you don't think the system is racist, if you don't think that teachers' beliefs or counselors' beliefs or individual beliefs get in the way of providing opportunities, I am more than happy to spend a lot of time giving you a lot of examples about how that actually happens. When you talk about culturally relevant curriculum, we have a very narrow view on what we teach students. It should be a wider view, because everybody has a right to know about their history. Everybody has a right to know how they played a part in this country, the things that were positive and the things that were negative, on all sides. I've heard a lot of people talking about critical race theory, about how it teaches students this, or it teaches students that. Nowhere in this statement do you see the words "critical race theory." You don't, because they're not there. And that's okay if you don't believe it. What I know is, I'm of mixed race. I don't support teaching my children hate. I don't support teaching any other children hate. That's why I'm on this board, is because of the experiences I went through as a Prince William County student, the experiences my son went through as a Prince William County student, so that nobody has to go through those same things ever again. From the time that I got here as a student, till as a parent, Dr. Walts came on board, the changes have been in this direction. And this is the way that we should be continuing to move, to benefit everybody, because kids are left out. Kids are left behind. That should not be the goal. We're not talking about lowering standards. There's no research that says you lower standards and people do better. There's only research that says you raise the bar and kids meet the need. That's what we're doing. We should be inclusive of everybody. Everyone should be able to have conversations, uncomfortable ones, uncomfortable ones, and feel safe to do that. That is what this statement is putting down in writing. That's the first step. Many of the questions that you have are exactly operational. Operations belongs to the superintendent. Period. We have approval of certain things, but that is not as by state code. The equity movement is here to stay. It's at the federal level, it is at the state level, and it is now coming down to our local levels. We didn't make this up. We're doing what we need to do for our children, and that means all children. What we should be doing is educating each other, having these difficult conversations with each other, and not fighting each other. It's good to have disagreements, it's good to have discourse, so you can learn. When you take a position, you stake it in the ground, and you have no intention of moving, there's no learning that occurs. The conversations aren't meant to change belief, it's for understanding. What we should be doing is having conversations, so we can understand each other's positions, learn how to grow from them, and having these conversations with our children. Because when you talk about equity, it is the younger children who are moving this ball way faster than any of the adults. I know this, because I've watched our student representatives speak on it, develop the seat, continue to grow it, fight and advocate for their needs. One of the most things, one of the things I'm most proud of, of being on the board, is getting student representatives on the board, who have carried this torch. We are behind them in this movement. We should be supporting the future, and that's what it's about, making sure that everyone learns, making sure that everyone is included, everyone feels safe, everyone learns about their history, and everyone is able to contribute. That is not equality. So I would hope that as this time moves forward, that we can have these conversations. I know that the new superintendent was involved in this, this has her input as well, and that when she comes on board, we have the operational conversations. This is step one, it's not the end. And this was not done in a silo either. I can't say enough that this came from our community, average citizens, just like y'all, who participated on an advisory council, as well as administrators, as well as staff, as well as other professionals and students. This wasn't done in a vacuum. What I would like to see is more participation and more discussion for the benefit of everybody, and less arguing, because it's not very helpful to anyone, especially our young people who are watching us. So I hope as this discussion moves forward, we do more equity work, we understand the current systems that we have in place, because we are already doing a lot of this. What we aren't doing is writing it down and making it real and permanent, as it should be. So I hope that.
I didn't, I did not.
That's okay, I know, it was a technical thing. But I do hope that, you know, this board approves this statement, that as we move forward in the summer and in months to come, we have these discussions, not only with the public, but the new superintendent. And as we enter into the new administration, I will continue to advocate for better communication, better understanding, and more communication between this board and the public at all points, and to be more proactive, so we don't run into situations like this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr., I'm going to go to Mr. Wilk, Ms. Jessie, and I'm going to go through everyone first. Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to go through this kind of bit by bit on the agreement. I do also want to say, one comment was made about how we're dismantling something that the superintendent has done. Although the superintendent and I have not agreed on everything, Dr. Walts' legacy is a legacy of extremely progressive, great educational things for this school system. This is a man who, at a time when people weren't willing to fund full-day kindergarten, pushed that at the very start of his term as superintendent. This is also the same man who led the charge to rename a building named after a seditionist Confederate general with one of the highest minority populations in the county. So again, where credit is due, I do want to thank you, Dr. Walts, for some of the great things you've brought to the school division. I haven't even touched on pre-K and the expansion of that, and early childhood education and stuff like that, and making equal opportunities for students. So I just wanted to highlight that. Going through some of the bullets and kind of breaking them down, and a couple of things were not said, Ms. Williams said, I'm going to kind of try to give anecdotal evidence of this, of things we're already doing in this county. None of this, to me, is absolutely new, and I'll give some examples of this. And, you know, when we were talking about the political ramifications, I wish we had some anecdotal, I'll give you an anecdotal. This year, I had a parent contact me saying that their child felt targeted because they were Trump supporters in a class relatively filled with kids of Biden supporters. Now, although I did not support President Trump, I do believe our kids deserve to be in a classroom where politics are not forced on our children from an educational standpoint. When I was a government teacher in this county, in Gainesville, one of the more conservative areas, I was able to keep my views so private that most of the kids, at the end, were so confused when they voted on what party I was. A lot of them said, by and large, Republican. So my point is, we're doing the right things. If you have the right advocate for you on the board, who's not putting partisan politics at the forefront of their decision-making, all kids are protected. I can give other anecdotes of kids whose fathers or mothers are police officers, and as a rise of what is happening in this country, their students felt targeted. Again, I went to bat for those kids. Doesn't matter what my political beliefs are, that our goal in schools is to keep politics out of the classroom. So I wish we had some anecdotes there, but I just wanted to give some there. So if I look at bullet number one, I just want to break this down, providing students and staff with access and resources, opportunity, support, interventions to ensure they maximize their abilities. Yeah, I agree. Our number-one priority should be maximizing the educational resources and benefits to all children. Providing all PWF students and staff with resources and opportunities that align to their unique levels of need, to meet their learning, health, and safety. Agreed. Again, our goal should be aligning staff and resources to help maximize all students' potentials and abilities. Although all students may not achieve the maximum level set by state and county academic standards, all students should have equal opportunities to succeed, both academically and socially and emotionally. High expectations and standards should apply across the school division, and should be consistent with every school building program within Prince William County. Give an example anecdotally, we have middle schools where there's geometry teachers right in the building for the advanced math kids, but we have three middle schools off the Route 1 corridor, where the kids have to be bused to a high school, taking valuable time out of instruction for those kids to get that same course. That's how I view that statement. Raising the achievement of all students while working to eliminate learning disparities. Again, agreed, we need to raise achievements of all students, however, we should continue and guarantee that programs implemented will be accessible for all students. As a county, we need to continue celebrating our successes and do everything in our ability to help those students who are struggling, without eliminating advanced courses and higher learning classes for those who take those courses. Hence, the school board has made concerted effort to hire more school counselors, psychologists, and additional aides in support. Also, this board created a funding distribution plan to support schools with higher socio-economically disadvantaged students, to better aid principals with their building programs. This has already happened. This statement is not a change from our current practices and policies, just a statement of affirmation to continue the great work that is done. Assuring all PWCs staff members to examine and interrupt beliefs, implicit, explicit biases, policies, and our practices that perpetuate systematic racism and discrimination. So looking at this, like most companies where I'm employed, I believe our employees should continue taking courses, as we have offered regarding cultural sensitivity. When I say that, this board, the previous board, not even this current members, but the last makeup of the previous board, voted to implement cultural sensitivity training for our teachers and staff. That is public. So feel free, contact the Office of Student Learning. Those courses are, from my understanding, run by University of Virginia modules that our teachers take in professional development. Now, I can tell you, my four years since the implementation of this, I have only received one teacher complaint in my district. Again, that's my district, that's anecdotal to me, but not representative of the entire county. So again, these courses are there currently, right now. I would encourage you all to look into those and see what those are, what our teachers are learning right now. Engaging guardians, parents, guardians, community divisions, school programs to build connections, provide support, foster relationships, blah, blah, blah. Again, agreed, these are programs that are schools. These are programs that our schools currently offer and will continue offering moving forward. Parent engagement is critical to a child's success. Given the advent of virtual platforms and instruction, our division should do everything possible to offer opportunities for parents to also join these events virtually. That's how I view that. Examining and revising our curriculum and teaching practices to ensure that they are culturally relevant and representative of achievements of our diverse community to meet social, academic needs and expectations of each student. Agreed. As a division, we work with teachers to better understand the student populations in which we serve. Our Office of Professional Development does an outstanding job providing teachers with courses to expand their knowledge and cultural competency. Per the encouragement of the Virginia Department of Education, our schools will provide offerings like African-American history and other additional courses based on student demand. Cultural awareness is not politics. Our division recognizes these differences, and we, as a division, updated things like our school calendar and to incorporate courses that support cultural awareness and other topics. Again, this statement, despite rumors, does not adopt a critical race theory of curriculum which I do not support. I do not support adopting critical race theory instruction for our students. Recruiting and retaining staff members who reflect rich diversity of our community. Again, these practices are all in place. We have already been doing things like this with our human resources offices. This statement is not bringing a chain to our current practices. In a minority-majority community, we need to do our best to recruit and retain staff that reflects the cultural diversity of our students. We are already making concerted efforts to send recruiters to HBCs and their teacher fairs to recruit more diverse students. We are sending our team of administrators to teacher fairs all over the country to recruit diverse learners, not just based by race, but by their, where their growth, where they were born and raised, and the different educational beliefs that they can bring to the school system. I was brought from Michigan, completely different philosophy and change of what I saw as educational instruction. I'm happy to be down here, I'm happy to be brought here and work with my colleagues, many of them who are born and raised in Virginia, like my wife. Preparing all students to succeed in a multicultural, global society by teaching contributions and viewpoints of all people and culturally relevant curricula. Agreed. Studies show that employers feel that many students are not prepared for the workforce upon completing high school. In a Forbes article titled "Students Think They're Ready for Real-World, Employers Not So Much," the article highlights how education needs to adjust and adapt a real-world curriculum for our students. The reality is, we are a multicultural and global society that needs to be incorporated into students' education. In another article from Insight into Diversity, cultural competency is highlighted as a key competency for future job recruiters. The article includes information on how companies are looking now more than ever to hire candidates with strong cultural competence. We need to continue preparing students for the real world that awaits them and show them the value of all races. There is no inherently evil race, and there is no curriculum in this country that validates any conspiracy that we will be educating our students to believe other races are better than others. Again, I will not be supporting any type of critical race theory that's brought before this board if that is part of the operational plan. I do support the equity statement as a beginning of a process of looking at other programs and resources for the school division. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I just want to piggyback on what Mr. Wilks was talking about, just to discuss my mindset as I evaluated the equity statement and my years in the classroom. We are doing much of this already. Discussing equity in the classroom is imperative to ensure that all students have access to equality education. For example, when a child is identified as gifted, they receive gifted services. Then the county reviews the data for gifted services to ensure all demographics have access to screening or testing. The goal is to raise the level of achievement for all students. Discussing equity requires frequent, sometimes difficult conversations that should be modeled top-down. There's always room for improvement. Nobody and nothing is perfect. All school students should be constantly reviewing data, and the public can access our data through the Equity Scorecard online, and they can see our strengths and our needs. Like, I think back in my years in the classroom, and I think about, like, when I was teaching, like, one-step equations. Many of my kids might understand what a variable is. Let's just say seventy-five percent of my class understood the definition of a variable, but twenty-five percent did not. I can't move on until everybody understands the definition of a variable. Understanding the definition of a variable is vital to one-step equations, which is connected to high school mathematics, and I, as an instructor, would need to identify and determine what roadblocks there were for all students in my class to understand the definition. So I might go back and maybe teach the root word, vary, or link the word to a home language, or maybe talk to a mentor or teacher. At the same time, I would differentiate instruction to make sure that those who understood the definition of a variable could access, to reach a higher level, maybe apply it outside to real-world instruction. Whatever you are doing and teaching, you are constantly assessing, adjusting, instructing, and repeating with purpose. We need our school leaders to do the same thing, to ensure all students receive a world-class education in an environment where they feel safe. That is what this equity statement says. That is what this equity statement asks of us. Thank you.
You want to go? Ms. Argarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I might actually be the only person on this dais who has to take these trainings that you have referenced before. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson has two. I have never had to report a bias or say things publicly to another employee or a colleague in my building. All of my training is to help me understand how I am viewing my students and what is it maybe I need to do to meet their needs a little bit better. I'll give you a really simple example. I am a music teacher. Every year, I do a lesson on Lunar New Year. I used to call it Chinese New Year, but the school I teach in has a very large population of students who come from different Asian countries. My first year, I called it Chinese New Year. I picked a Chinese song, we did some things, it was great. And one of my kids raised her hand and said, "We do a similar thing in Korea." So the next year, I added Korea, but before I added Korea, I made sure I talked to my students first and said, "Lunar New Year is coming up. I would like to know how your family celebrates it." And now I am able to more reflect those students in that lesson, and it changes every year, and I have learned more. Now, that's a simple example, but that is one example. As someone who has been taking these trainings for several years now, I know that the state is going to start mandating these things. Prince William County is ahead of the curve. They are already training teachers, they are already making changes and providing the experiences and setting the tone for the things that the state is already coming behind us and saying you have to do. So we're in a good position, we're in a great position, we're leaders in it. So all of this, I know these words also, they bring up a lot for us, and that is also part of the conversation. As Ms. Williams said earlier, it is, it's okay to be uncomfortable, we do have to have these conversations. I know I have made a huge journey myself. I will admit that. There's things that I had my own thoughts before, and it's changed. So I think this is worthy of conversation, it is just a start. Remember, we have asked some operational questions, those are to come later. We also have things that we have to work on for the future, and these things should not be set in stone, but working documents, including this. This should be a working document, because if we find that we need to adjust for the betterment of our students, well, we should, and we should invite everybody in on that conversation. I will also add, I spoke to the person who sits on the committee who represents the Coles District, and she did mention that it might be helpful to have a really good conversation about what some of these terms mean in the context of our education system. So I will leave you with that. I am grateful for the work that they have done. I am welcome the conversation. So we should be having these conversations and continue this discussion. Thank you.
Ms. Jesse, you had a final comment?
Yes.
And then I'll go to Ms. Ralston afterwards. Ms. Jesse.
I'm going to disagree with a little bit of what's been said here, because everyone says that Dr. Walz does a wonderful job, but Dr. Walz would also agree that there's more work to do, and that there are disparities. If you want to know about access to dual enrollment, specialty programs, college readiness, access to gifted education and specialty programs, read the strategic plan. Look at where, and this is out, if you go to page seventeen, and I shouldn't be talking to the audience, but I am because you're here, and I think you deserve to be talking, I'm sensitive to the citizens' comments, but go to page seventeen, and you'll see that there are disparities throughout the state, there are disparities in Prince William County. And several times tonight, Dr. McDade has been mentioned. One of the reasons that I was one of the people who, in this whole board, selected her, because she is a community input person. So in reviewing all of the equity statements, I also went to Chicago, and I thought, what did they do for equity? So they heard from over three thousand voices in the city, because that's who she is. They heard from students, hundreds of students. They didn't just meet with parent advisory councils, they met with groups of parents, thousands of them. It's a five-year plan. She is going to be the person that's going to implement it. I want to reassure you that she is not the kind of person that's going to do something without input. She's a town hall kind of person, she's going to seek the input of all parents. Yes, there are problems in this county, and there are problems in the school system, and that's problems throughout the nation. And so when Mrs., when I was listening to Ms. Williams, she said, "I am the most whatever equity." I've done this for forty years, forty years. I've seen kids learn that should not learn. Not only did they learn, but they learn at high levels, and when you've seen that, you cannot look away. And so whatever we need to do to get all of these kids, every one of them, I would like, my goal, personal goal, is that every child in this system graduates and be either ready for college or ready for a career. That's what we need to do, every one of them, black, white, I don't care what color. It's all of our kids. And what I like about the equity statement is that it's all. But I do have to ask Mr. Iman if it's okay to add facilities in that statement. Can we get that? And I think the parents really do deserve to know our definition of equity. Can we provide that statement for parents? Not just a framework, but how do we define equity? Because equity versus, most people really don't know which, it's a scary kind of thing. You come and see you're going to do equity. And the other thing I noticed is that Dr. McDade and what they were doing, they talked about the why, the how, and what. And I think that maybe what's happening is that somehow we're leading, giving parents the impression that we didn't, they don't understand why we're doing it, and somehow that needs to be explained to them. And then the what, and the authorization, the actualizing of this is going to be where the rubber's going to meet the road. And I assure you, I know this lady not that well, but I, from what, she impressed all of us, because she is a hands-on person, and she wants to hear from every single one of you. So I thank all of you for coming and sharing your input, and I will vote for this, but only if we agree that we would put, and the other thing that I didn't mention, because we didn't talk about the groups, one of the lowest-performing groups are in special ed, access to, in our county, and in, we're above the state, but we still have a lot of work to do. And I don't say this to mean that I didn't think you did a good job, but we do have work to do, and I think that's why you supported the Equity Committee, because you know that there's still work to do. So with that, I'm voting, but only with those conditions. Is that okay, Mr. Iman?
Understood. Ms., I had, Ms. Ralston, did you have any comments?
Yeah, just one or two. But I agree with all the people who believe that if you are fair and equal, then it's much better than not being unfair and equal. When you live in that kind of, in that kind of spirit, you have to be real careful. As an African-American woman, I've had a lot of trouble in talking with people and getting people to understand of who we are, which is no difference with who there are, just color. Thank you.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, everybody supports equal access and equal opportunity for our students. We can all get behind, you know, some of the statements that are in here that say, you know, we need to provide resources, opportunities, supports, and interventions to ensure that students maximize their abilities and their potential. There's nothing wrong with that statement, it's a very appropriate statement. That we will provide students and staff with resources and opportunities that align to their unique levels of need, from the specialized student, the refugee, the gifted student, the student that's experienced trauma, and students who need acceleration. Students are very bright but very disengaged. We can do all kinds of things, and we do things like that in Prince William County. We have great schools and great programs. We have diversity across our programs and our schools, we have wonderful specialty programs, we have amazing teachers and counselors and guidance counselors who really work hard to help children, to give them the opportunities that they need to succeed. And even raising, you know, achievement of students and working to eliminate disparities, yes. Do kids come to school equally prepared? No. Can we help them? Yes. We can do everything possible to help them. Where I have issues with this statement is where we say things like, we're going to assure people, examine implicit and explicit bias. We assume that they have biases that are getting in the way of their education, of their teaching. We assume that we have policies and practices that are perpetuating systemic racism. We assume that we have these problems. I'm sorry, but I do not see a review, a study, evidence that we have systemic racism. Now, we may have inequalities, yes, because we have a limited pot of resources, and we seek to allocate those resources to the best of our ability. Do we have the exact same programs at every school in every classroom? No. Are we doing our very best to provide as many opportunities as possible? Yes. Do we provide math instruction, reading instruction, support in science and art and PE and everything else? Yes. It's not always going to be exactly the same, but we do an excellent job. And so I have an issue with saying, or assuming, facts not in evidence. If we can prove it, okay, but we can't just assume that we have, you know, that we have perpetuated systemic racism without doing due diligence. I love that we are engaging parents and guardians and the community in our programs and building connections and providing support, because parents are essential. We cannot shut parents out of this dialogue. We can't put upon our students and put upon our parents doctrines and ideologies that they have not had a say in, and we can't, I don't think it's enough to say, "Just trust us, we're going to do it right." If we're going to pass something, we need to have, give parents a way, at least if we can't say what it is that we're going to be doing, we need to at least provide a way that they can be a part of the dialogue and not have something put upon them without their input. I think it's really important that we recognize, we need the consent of the governed. We represent. We are not knowledgeable in everything, but we represent, we represent the people. You put us here, and we listen to you. And as we examine and revise our curriculum and teaching practices, if we're going to improve our teaching practices, great, that's wonderful. But if we're going to start down a path of indoctrination, or if we're going to start down a path of methodology that seeks to pit children against one another because of their race, no, that's not okay. And I think most parents would say, "I don't want that. I don't want that in my home, I don't want my child being taught that." Now, diversity is great. We have, at some of our schools, we have students from, you know, thirty-five different countries. One of my schools is like that, kids from all over the world, and we can celebrate that in appropriate ways. But when we get down to basic instruction of math, science, language arts, reading, we need to be providing a very solid, equal type of instruction and giving them the basics so that they can accomplish their academic goals, and we can have those high expectations for every student. We shouldn't be holding anybody back, we should be accelerating everybody to the maximum amount possible. I have some issues with the idea that we would retain and recruit based on race. It looks to me like that bullet point is talking about that. Do we want diversity in our teaching force? Absolutely. But it should not be, we should not run afoul of our civil rights laws. We have those civil rights laws for a reason. The Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four says you cannot base, you cannot hire based on discriminatory practices such as sex, or origin, national origin, or race, or ethnic origin, or any, anything else. You can't do that. We already have those laws. So I'm not really sure what we're saying here. Are we going to be looking to hire people based on race? I think we might have a problem if we're, you know, doing that only if that's one of our like main criteria. We need to look for the best teachers possible. I agree with that. We need to look for great teachers and we have great teachers. And if we have teachers that are struggling, we need to have training that helps them be more successful teachers. And I agree, we do live in a multicultural, global society where we teach the contributions and viewpoints of all people. Obviously, we can't teach the viewpoints of every single person or every single culture. We would never get through it. I took many, I have a degree in humanities and I took many history classes, world history classes, Asian humanities classes, et cetera, Islamic history classes. You, it would take you a lifetime to study all the contributions of everybody. What our students need are the basics to help them succeed in an ever-changing workforce. They need more STEM education. They need mathematics that is at a very high level. We need science education that's a very high level. We need technology education, those kinds of things. Those are the things that are going to make a difference for our graduates as they go out and they seek higher education and they seek high levels of employment, they become productive citizens and contribute and give back. That's the kind of thing that we're doing. I don't know, I don't know if this equity statement will accomplish that or not, but what I fear is some of the concerns that were raised today, that parents are concerned about fairness, equity, merit. They're concerned about civil rights. They're concerned about freedom of speech. They're concerned about the introduction of destructive political ideology and accompanying methodology because friends, that's happening. There are, that's happening in other places, in our neighboring jurisdictions and places like California. There's evidence of what is happening in that, along those lines. I hope we don't go down that road in Prince William County. I will fight that if we do. I agree with Mr. Wilk. I will fight the introduction of critical race theory methodology and ideology into our schools because I think it's harmful. I think it's divisive. I think it pits children against each other and it puts an inordinate emphasis on race. And I think we should get away from that. Instead, we should look at achievement and learning and equity, equality of opportunity. I just think we have a lot of work to do. I don't think this is quite ready yet. I think we have a lot of questions. I think the public has raised a lot of questions. I would like to have, continue having dialogues on this. I believe that the public has a right to answers and I hope that we can find answers for them to their satisfaction.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams.
I'd just like my second.
It's not a debate though, remember?
No, no, no. So I'm not here to debate. I just want to start by saying, I respect everybody's right to have their own opinion and to stand firm in their position because that's part of what it's all about. What I do want to say is, you know, equity, equity means that things are fair. Equality means that things are the same. That's actually the definition. You can look it up. That's what's stated there. I'm not going to debate it because I didn't write the definition. It's there for everyone to see. When you talk about discrimination and you talk about racism, they aren't interchangeable. It's not the same thing. You can discriminate on a bunch of things. Racism is different. And when you talk about, as Ms. Wall was saying about studying humanities and history, do you know what it's like to grow up in an American education system and not learn about your people's contribution to this country? Because that's what we're talking about adding, not talking about taking away. You're talking about adding. When you're a person of color, children do what they see. So when you grow up in a world and you don't have people around you who are successful that look like you, you're less likely and inclined to believe that you can do it too. That's, there are studies about that. I'm not making this up. You're free to look it up for yourself. When you talk about, you're not sure if there's systemic racism and racism, there's plenty of documented data and evidence. Happy to discuss with anyone afterwards. What I'm not going to sit here and do is not stand up for my position and not speak my truth and what I know and what research has shown for me and just let one side continue to push rhetoric that I disagree with. I think that you should speak it, but every time it's spoken, I'm going to speak up for the other side because that's what we're supposed to be doing. That is fair. It's not equal, but it's fair, which is equality. And that is the point. We don't have to believe the same things, but I'm not going to not speak my truth. I'm not going to not speak and show the data that says that these things are real because they are. It's not about, for me, it's why I agree, it's not from the research that I know, from the studies that I've been in, that says that these things don't exist. Part of systemic racism is the policies and things that are in writing that have existed since time. It's, we're not talking about individual racism, although that plays a factor. We're not talking about individual discrimination, although that pays a factor. When you talk about these things, we're talking about as a system. And it is that way. If it wasn't, then we wouldn't have had Brown versus Board of Education. If it isn't, we wouldn't have disparities now between certain ends of the county or certain schools having more resources than others because of outside influences or whatever the case may be. Those are real things. When my son went to compete in a culinary competition, there were fifty other schools in the nation that went to compete. His school was more concerned about beating another Prince William County school because that school came with nice book bags and T-shirts and matching shirts and all of these things. In his school, they had to work during lunch, breakfast, dinner, after school to be able to afford to go. They didn't come with matching anything. What's fair is that they all had the chance to go. Equality would be if they all had the appropriate resources to go, which they didn't. That's important. It does make a difference when you look out and you see people who look like you, talk like you. Doesn't mean that they get the job just because. You also have to have the credentials to match. We didn't change the name of a middle school because it didn't make a difference. We changed it because it made a difference, because it is important. You have to have things in writing. When you don't, things can go any which way you want them to go. There's nothing that unifies, there's nothing to hold you accountable, there's nothing to acknowledge what is or what isn't. What we are doing, part of what we are doing, is changing the what was into what our kids are asking us, which is for everyone to be represented, everyone's voice to be heard and to be able to do the things to allow them to excel. Beliefs are debatable. Positions are debatable. Data that we have that says these things are in existence because it's been recorded for decades is real. There are more students of color, all colors, who encounter disciplinary actions in this state. That's why there's a thing called the school-to-prison pipeline. It's not just black kids. In certain schools, it's Asian children. In certain schools, it's white children. In certain schools, it's black children. What it should be is children who need discipline, not just because of people's beliefs or the way the system is designed. When you talk about implicit biases and biases, if you deal with a child whose family, it's more likely that their family yells and that's how they communicate and they come into school and in your mind, you think yelling is a negative thing, what are you going to think when you interact with that child if you don't understand that other people interact differently in their homes? How are you going to interact? You won't know. You're not prepared. So these are the kinds of things that we're talking about. Hold on. Sorry, don't mean to be rude. Just passionate. I just think that what we should be doing is conversating and learning, not just from the data and the research that's real, but from talking to each other and understanding that these differences are big. They impact how we interact with each other and we should be more knowledgeable. But absolutely, we can't solve these problems or even go down this road if we don't have a starting point. And we need to have a starting point across the division. And that's what we're doing. And when we talk about operational things, I hope that we have more conversations. It would be nice to have town halls. And not screaming matches, but actual conversations because our kids are always watching and they absolutely deserve to see us model behavior that we ask of them, which is to be respectful and mindful of others. So, thank you.
Ms. Caroline Silveira, our student rep, has something to say. Caroline?
Okay, so I'd like to just start by saying that I'm not a voting member of the board. The power that I hold is in my voice. So I'm just going to give a student experience of how equity has helped students this past November, October. So the county gave a free SAT day for all seniors. And while this was offered to all seniors, it was developed with an equity mindset. So equity is not necessarily just a tangible thing or things that you give to somebody. It's also a way of thinking. So not only did we get free SATs, which SATs are about seventy dollars, but they also made sure that we had transportation if we needed it, bus transportation and food. So me personally, I have my own car and I have food to eat at home. So I didn't have to worry about any of that. But the county also recognized that there are kids who may not eat breakfast some days because they don't have food in their house or their parents are working, they don't have a car and they need to get to this SAT. So I just wanted to give an example because equity is not necessarily always, oh, only low-income kids can go to this free SAT day. It's everybody can come, but we understand that some people have different backgrounds and they might not be able to make it if we don't give them buses. And I think that personally, that day helped a lot of students and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Silveira. Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one no. Mrs. Wall, motion passed.
Moving on next to, what is that? Is that it? Board Matters. We'll start with Mr. Wilk's side.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. Do want to recognize, I did have the pleasure of attending, just with Dr. Waltz as well, to the Henderson Multicultural Event, virtual event. It was a great event and thank you for attending the events there.
Keep going, Mr.
So. The, where was I? So the other thing was the.
The evening, everyone, please.
I got the chance to attend. Yeah, happy birthday. Yes. My mind is kind of, so yeah, I got to attend the Potomac Senior Event at Potomac High School. That was a great event and I appreciate the invitation and I really value what our principals are doing at the high school level to make the senior year as memorable as possible during these times. I do want to recognize, it is graduation season, so I do want to recognize from each of my school, ask my principals to give me kind of highlights of a couple of students they want to recognize tonight. Forest Park is one of my high schools. Thomas Byrne and Mohammed Musa were recipients of the Amazon Award. It provides each of them forty thousand dollars over four years and a guaranteed internship with Amazon. It was awarded to a hundred seniors in the nation. So it is quite the honor that the two students from our county were students from Forest Park High School. Thomas will be attending Renzler while Mohammed will attend Stanford. Pretty cool. At Potomac, one of our students, Kele Greben, Kele has earned a four-point-eight, four-point-oh-eight-two GPA and completed several ACE and IG CSE level Cambridge courses with corresponding exams that allows him to earn college credits. He has earned all A's each quarter this year while participating in virtual. Kele assists with our Potomac yearbook and is a member of Potomac Leadership Course. Kele is also a wonderful Potomac baseball player and has accepted an athletic scholarship to continue his academic and athletic journey at Norfolk State University. Kele is especially recognized for his work this year in organizing our Potomac Drive-In Movie Night. The Movie Night gave our juniors and seniors an opportunity to safely spend time with one another while enjoying a movie in concessions on an eighty-foot screen onsite at Potomac. And so again, those will be the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson, would you like?
Thank you, Ms. Akapor. Tonight, we talked about equity in education and I already stated my mindset and my point of view on it. But I just wanted to talk just really quickly on a personal note. I don't talk much about my own kids. Like their mom, one has a hearing loss and as some people say, hearing impaired or harder hearing. And I know both as a mother and a special education teacher and a former student with an IEP, the importance of this equity statement. We must watch data to ensure that students are provided opportunities and high expectations. We must continue to provide opportunities for achievement and acceptance. I know this, again, as a mother, as a student who had an IEP and as a special educator. This month is Asian Heritage Month. We cannot make resolutions right now, but I want to take a moment to recognize the importance of recognizing contributions and influences for Asian-Americans and Pacific Islander-Americans. I also had the privilege of attending The Little Mermaid at Cedar Point this week or last weekend. And it was amazing. It was just awesome. It was the highlight of my week and congratulations to the performers and staff. Thank you, Ms. Silveira, for your dedication to our county and for all your hard work. Lastly, congratulations to the upcoming graduations of, graduates of two thousand twenty-one. I'm entrusted daily by the dedication, grace and bravery of the students of Prince William County. Thank you.
Ms. Wall.
I'm going to try to be brief tonight. I just want to congratulate all of the graduates of two thousand twenty-one and all of the children who will be progressing in our advancement ceremonies at the elementary and middle and high school levels. I don't know if we do it at high school, but definitely elementary and middle levels in the coming weeks. I know this is a hard time of year because everybody kind of starts too long for summer, but I would just encourage everybody to still put in their best effort. Long time ago, I watched a cross-country race where the runners, it was a hot day and the runners struggled across the finish line. They stumbled and fell and crawled, got up, stumbled and fell to get across the finish line. And I always feel like that's a little bit how the end of May is. But I would just encourage everybody, teachers, administrators, students, parents, to just, you know, just be diligent and really hold the course to the very end. I'm excited about graduation. I'm so excited about graduation. I'm excited that we will have some in-person celebrations, although, you know, the crazy stuff we did last year was pretty exciting and different and fun, but I'm excited for the tradition. Topic of masks come up quite, comes up quite frequently in my inbox. I know, everybody stay tuned. It's a fast shifting area of public policy and public health right now. Please, please be patient and we thank you for your patience. I want to thank our student representative Caroline and Ben Kim, if he's listening, and all the student senators for their hard work. It's been really wonderful to see student leadership in action. I wish you all the best for your academic endeavors for the next year and beyond. I hope that you will come back and say hi to us from time to time and keep us, keep us in touch, keep in touch. And with that, I say good night.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that I am very thankful to this board for passing this equity statement. I wish it could have been an eight oh vote, but I completely understand why it was not. And I want to take the opportunity to, to say to Ms. Wall that I think sometimes being in the minority and standing your ground and respecting your constituents is a hard thing to do, but I think you always do it with so much dignity. And while we don't agree, and I think some of the things that we give off in the public is when we don't agree that this board doesn't get along, and I want to make sure that it's very clear that we don't always agree, but we do very much respect each other's role as board members. And I don't want to have another unnecessary discussion with the public when it's not the case. So I wanted to start by saying that. I am also excited about graduation season. It's all of the promotion ceremonies and graduations and everything that goes on. But I would like to take one moment out to ask students, especially those seniors that you know, those kids in your class who aren't graduating, because that's very real, especially this year, take a minute and talk to them. I talked to two students this week who aren't graduating and had felt like they have just given up and they're almost, they're seniors, a couple credits short or whatever it may be, but are willing to give up. I'm sure that they could use a little bit of an encouraging word because it's really hard when all of your friends are moving on. when all of your friends are moving on and you are not. You're staying stagnant. So if you could, take a moment from your celebrations and encourage them to take a summer school class, to let them know that they're not a failure, that it's, it is okay. It happens. Nobody, there's, there's, society tells you there's a timeline, but as long as you don't give up, that's the most important thing. And I just wanted to mention that because I did have a conversation with two students this past week who felt like they're, they were lost and that people had given up on them. And a little bit of encouragement went a long way, and both of them hopefully will be enrolled in summer school and be able to get their degrees, their diplomas. So let's be mindful of those who aren't making those achievements as well because it's really hard for them. Other than that, it's always an honor to serve on this board with student representatives. I always say I hope you come back, but I really mean it. Ms. Silva, and it's since you're here tonight, I will speak directly to you. It's been an honor to serve. You have definitely kept me on my toes, invited me to many classes, and I felt like every time I was turning around in a school activity, Ms. Silva was there. And that's how it was with Mr. Kim last year. I cannot thank you enough for your service, for all of the value add you have brought to this position. And I do hope you continue to come back and, and keep us abreast of how your life is moving and what you see when you look behind as a graduate, and how we can continue to improve. And thank you to all of our student senate members, excuse me.
Good evening. I just want to first of all, thank the board for passing the equity statement. I do think that we didn't, we, I think there should have been a little bit more of why beforehand. But when I looked at the audience tonight, I realized that this was, that we've got to bring more diversity into our input sessions on this. So I would recommend that everyone, all the associates, to read the Virginia landscape. The numbers are real. If you look at your own strategic plan, the numbers are very real. Access, and we need to do a better job of that. And I hope we're not putting Dr. Wade, Dr. McDate in a situation by saying, well, she had input. I don't want to pre, preforecast what she's going to do in terms of what's happened with my, first of all, I was here last week congratulating Amy Schultz for being the principal of the year. And that same night, of course, I learned that she was leaving and that she is now going to be the principal at Henderson. So I want to congratulate her on the graduation. I will be attending many. I will try to attend Hilton High School's graduation. My daughter works with primarily African-American, with these African-American women, helping them navigate the college landscape. And I want to give a shout out to Chloe Presley from Hilton High School. I think she has a 5.10 and is going to Yale. And many of these kids, when you give them the opportunity and you give them a little push, they can do it. The last thing I wanted to say to everyone is that when it comes to discipline, you know, I don't have any research to show this. I have this thing that I call research and reality, what I see on the ground and what I see in the research. When I came to Vaughn Elementary, I had 600 discipline referrals. When we hit 90% and all those kids were learning, this disproportionality you see in these reports, it's about kids learning. And it's not just black kids. It's white kids. It's everybody. When you create an atmosphere where we catch the wave. So I hope that this does not become a political football, and I hope we can avoid that as Dr. McDate comes to the school system. I really do. But we have to do what we know to be the right thing to do. And I agree with Ms. Williams. I don't apologize for anything. In terms of teachers, Ms. Walls, we talk about discrimination with teachers. I, I had 55% minority teachers with the highest scores in, on the eastern end. It's not about hiring teachers because they're white or black, but I did hire teachers, African-American teachers who were not selected. The thing is, we have to deal with our current reality. We do have a problem, but we're not the only school system with this problem. It's a national problem. Joe Biden sees it as a problem. And I'm glad that we didn't just get cave in tonight and say, well, because we have a group of parents who are upset that we're going to change who we are. Thank you.
Ms. Ralston.
You know, I've stood here and I've been listening. And with my number of years of living on this earth, the only one thing in my life that I remember real well, and that was when this white man threw a little bitty glass ball at me and knocked me out because he didn't believe that black kids should not go to our church. We were Catholic. But what I, the purpose of me telling you that story is to understand that everybody has different thoughts of how they really want to do something. And it's not always good. We've got to make people understand. We are not trying to, to harm people. We're not trying to do things that they wouldn't do themselves, but they would. So my race, in my opinion, has stood the test. And can you stand the test of becoming equal within our society? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Argapor.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I love that we are starting to get out and about a little bit more. Had a few things that I attended. One happened to be online, but it was the Civil Air Patrol here in Prince William County. These are students who participate. It's an extracurricular activity, and I was invited to just sort of see what it was all about. And I believe I was told that some kids could even earn a pilot's license eventually in, in high school. And the, the person who invited me was talking about how this starts in middle school. So I thought it was an amazing opportunity to watch a student-led activity. I got a little exercise in, got to do some, oh, I didn't do the extemporaneous speaking, but the kids did. And it was really fun to watch them lead and, and encourage each other through it. So I am hoping that we will be able to get people to see that opportunity, and especially as early as middle school. I was also invited to see the VEX World Competition on Monday at Fred Lynn. We had three middle schools participating. It was Fred Lynn, Parkside, and Benton. And the kids were amazing. They, one of my favorite things about robotics is that the kids cheer each other on, and, and they just, they're so encouraging. But the most remarkable thing about this year is that these kids had to work online through Zoom through most of the, most of the season. So this competition, this was the world competition, was one of the first times the parents had actually gotten to, to see it as well. Wanted to also say, I don't know how they, how they ranked, but those would be coming out eventually. I also got a chance to watch Eagle Troop, Eagle Awards from Troop 1195. Aiden Call, Matthew Bonifera, Joey Stern, Luke Clements, and Jacob Ogden all earned their Eagle Awards. It was, they're very impressive young men. They're going to do amazing things in this world. Last thing I want to, oh, no, not last thing. I also got a word from Colgan High School that the Virginia Junior Academy of Science has a new co-president, and that is Armon Latif. And so it's the first student from Prince William County. Congratulations there. Dr. Waltz, I also want to thank you for, you know, this year's been four steps forward, three steps back. So thank you for working and the, and division staff for working on how we can maybe make up some difference with that COLA and, and what our employees, you know, they lost a little bit last year, and they worked extra, extra, extra hard this year. So thank you for, for looking into that, and I'll look forward to hearing next time what, what that's going to look like. Thank you, everybody. I know usually I say, wear your mask, wash your hands, keep your distance, get the vaccine. We're doing really, really great with this. So we're going to still follow the rules in school. You do you, boo.
I don't know what that means. All right, outstanding. Well, thank you all very much. Another wonderful meeting. And, and a couple notes. I had the great opportunity of visiting Ms. Adele Jackson's district and the Brentsville District High School's annual plant sale. They have a fabulous new greenhouse. Plants were fantastic. I did buy a bunch of them. They're all planted, and I certainly believe they will survive and be the best part of my garden this year. So very excited and thank Mr. Miller, Ms. Amy Beard out there, Wyatt Die, one of the students that helped me get that stuff sorted out and picked out. So I really appreciate it for everyone out there and for the great horticultural program you have out there. It may be, I, I believe, actually, Dr. Waltz, would you agree, it's the best one in the nation?
I would.
Yes.
Yeah, that's right. It is, it is the best one in the nation, and, and I believe Dr. Waltz and, and his staff have done even more to make it even better every single minute and every single year. And so it was a great opportunity. So great time. Again, congratulations to our seniors' commencements we will be having at Jiffy Lube, and there will be information coming out this Friday to parents about numbers of guests, but it will certainly be more than what we were going to have before. So we're very excited about that. We want to thank Jiffy Lube Live. We want to thank Chair Wheeler and the Board of County Supervisors for supporting our efforts. Want to thank Governor Northam for lifting the restrictions. And we are excited to start seeing our nation go back to normal and sharing that with our, our, our children and our seniors. Again, for all of our students out there, get your work done. You have AP exams, SOL stuff's coming up. We're almost at the end of this year, and hopefully we'll never have to relive this year again. So thank you all very much. Have a wonderful evening and have a good night.